I'd like to call this August 6th meeting of the Cookeville City Council to order. Can we have a roll call?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Shelton.
Here.
Mayor Saleh.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Present.
Councilman Williams.
Present.
All present.
Thank you, Kathy. If we could all rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Shipley, do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight?
No changes.
No changes. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have our motion and our second. All vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, that brings us to our old business portion of the meeting. We have item two, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held July the 16th, 2009. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
We have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council? Seeing no comments, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
That brings us to our consent agenda. We have four items there. Item three, set a date for a public hearing on ordinance 090815, amending the zoning code pertaining to electronic reader boards in the neighborhood commercial zone. Set a date for September the 3rd for a public hearing on ordinance 090816, rezoning 1200 Miracle Road and adjacent vacant lot from single-family residential to general commercial. And set a date, September the 3rd, for a public hearing on ordinance 090817, annexation of Free Hill Road, North Washington Avenue area, and resolution 090811, adopting planned services for the same. And item six, consider awarding bids for transformers for the electric department. Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda?
No approval.
We have our motion and our second. Any items need to be pulled out of there and discussed? Seeing no discussion, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
All right, thank you. That brings us to the new business portion of our meeting. Several items here. Item seven, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 090713, amending section 230 of the Cookeville zoning code to adopt revised floodplain regulations as mandated by FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, sponsor Mr. James Mills. James?
Mayor and council members, in order to maintain the city's eligibility in the National Flood Insurance Program, we're required to adopt revised regulations governing development in identified flood hazard areas. Development and flood hazard areas within Cookeville is regulated by our zoning code, specifically section 230. The planning department is prepared to revise section 230 to comply with the requirements of FEMA. The majority of the revisions can be classified as very minor, but there are some significant changes, which include new definitions for floor, reasonably safe from flooding, and special flood hazard area. The definition of substantial improvement's been revised to delete the five-year cumulative cost period for repairs, alterations, et cetera, exceeding 50 percent of the market value of the structure. The revision is basically how the definition read prior to the 2007 required changes. The penalties for violation sections been revised to specify that violators are susceptible to fines and court costs. And lastly, a severability clause has been added. The city is required to participate in the program in order for property owners to be able to purchase federally subsidized flood insurance. We have approximately 200 homes and structures located within FEMA-identified floodplains in Cookeville, and as of May 31st of this year, we had 45 national flood insurance policies with over $6 million of insurance in force. The proposed amendments have been approved by the planning commission and recommended by the planning department.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mills. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And a second, thank you. Any discussion by the council?
This has to do then mainly with new structures that would be built and they'd have to have special...
Now, there are requirements, if you want to locate within an area that's identified by FEMA as a floodplain, in terms of elevation or floodproofing, but there are certain standards that must be met. Now, the only clause that applies to existing is that 50 percent cumulative damage or improvement clause. If you reach that point, then you'd have to comply with the regulations. Basically, for an existing structure would consist of floodproofing.
It's grandfathered.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, do we have any comments from the audience? Any further comments from the council? Seeing no further comments, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Mills, excuse me. Item eight, consider on first reading ordinance 090814, amending title 18, chapter 1 of the Cookeville Municipal Code pertaining to water storage rates. Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, I'm presenting a correction to an omission that I made during the last council meeting when we did a rate increase ordinance. I left out some language that covered the outside storage rate. This will correct that language. It will, instead of going into effect July 1st, it'll go into effect August 1st, and I'd recommend approval.
All right, thank you, Mr. Kelly. Do we have a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have our motion and our second. Any discussion by the council? Any comments from the audience? Seeing no comments, all vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Item nine, consider resolution 090708 to opt out of public, chapter 428, as adopted by the Tennessee General Assembly, guns in the parks, et cetera. Sponsor Mr. Jim Shipley.
Mayor and council, this is a resolution that is required by public, chapter 428, just passed by the state legislature, if the city wants to opt out of that amendment to the law. And what this resolution will do is leave our current ordinance in effect that currently bans weapons of any kind in our public parks.
All right, do we have a motion and a second to approve?
No approval.
We have our motion and our second. Discussion by the council? I'd just like, before we get started, I assume that we have a lot of people here. This has been a very hot topic for us and this community, and as we begin our convening period, we would like to, I'd like to just say a couple of house rules here. We typically give people up to three minutes to speak. We have a timer. Please be respectful that other people would like to speak as well. And if we begin to see redundancy in the comments, if someone has already made your comments, let's try to be brief and not just keep saying the same thing over and over again. We'll get the point there. So at this time, if there's...
I think you mentioned about the addresses or...
Yeah, and as you come up, please state your name and whether you're a resident or not of the city of Cookeville and your address. We'd like that for our discussion here, meeting minutes. So if you would, please be respectful of others as you come forth and make your comments, and we encourage you to do so. We do have a motion and a second on the floor, and any discussion by the council or...
As we go forward with this, my feeling on this and the comments that I have received at my home and on my email, the feeling that I have for this is that we need to just maintain the status quo. Guns have never been allowed in city parks here in the city of Cookeville, and I see no reason for us to have that changed. And when we look at the statistics, I feel like, I want people to feel like they can go into the park and know that there won't be armed people there, other than the police.
Mr. Shipley, I know our state representative, Henry Fincher, was co-sponsor on this bill. I don't know if he's here. I don't see him tonight. Was he...
I did call him and invite him, and he said he couldn't make it tonight.
Couldn't make it tonight, okay. I've hoped he could be here.
Well, you know, the way that this was handed to us from the legislature was saying, "All parks." Well, that's, we have to take that as it is, and we can't just pick and choose which park we could say you could have a gun in and which you could not. Now, many of our parks are very congested and with people in them frequently. They're ballparks and so forth. So if we were talking about some nature trails, some wilderness area, then that would, we'd have another discussion tonight. I think that's a different, I feel differently about that type of so-called park than, but we don't have a choice. We've got to say, "All parks and all of our areas are nothing." So we, so I feel like that we have so many parks that are so active with people that it would be, it would be a dangerous thing to have guns, and of course, we can't control guns.
No.
You know, who's got a gun, who's not got a gun, if they don't have a permit, I mean, but, so why would we want guns there permitted or not permitted? I just don't think we'd want that. Now, if it were talking about some wilderness area, very remote areas, that's a different story altogether. So my feeling is that we need to opt out of this law that has been sent down by the legislature. And at another time, maybe some of those discussions of remote areas and so forth could be addressed. And of course, this does not have anything to do with people who have legal permits to carry guns in other places. I mean, you don't carry guns into a courtroom, you don't, and there's other restrictions, so...
You don't carry them into the state legislature.
So, it is my opinion that we do not need to be carrying guns into parks in our city. We've got a responsibility to this community, far as the safety is best we can provide it. And this, you know, human beings are not perfect, but I think we do the best we can. And so, we've had a pretty good record with the ordinance, the way it's been since 1995, and I feel like that it will be, it should be that way. That's my opinion. Thank you.
All right, any other comments before we open it up to the public? All right, at this time, if we have two lecterns, feel free to come to either lectern. And as I stated, if you have up to three minutes to speak, and if you would just please identify yourself and where you live, it'd be great.
Thank you, council. I'm Sam Glasgow. I'm a local pathologist, and I'm also on the Tennessee Central Heritage Rail Trail Authority. I wanted to tell you a little bit about what I found about the TSSAA. That's the Tennessee Secondary School Athletic Association. It is directed by Bernard Childers, who I'd have had a very hard time getting in hold of, but finally through email, I got in hold of him. And I've done a little bit, I didn't know what TSSAA was, but it's a administrative body that administrates inter-scholastic athletes in Tennessee, all over Tennessee. Putnam County is in District 4. We have 20 other counties in our district. The mission, of course, is to promote participation, good sportsmanship, develop good round, well-rounded citizens. There are nine members on the TSSAA. Each is elected within its own district. They serve for three terms. These are responsible citizens, and they make up principals and superintendents of schools. My email with Bernard Childers started with an email I sent to him because I had heard that he was going to, as director of the TSSAA, he was gonna say to the Murfreesboro City Council, if they didn't opt out, that he was not gonna schedule any athletics in Murfreesboro. Well, that kinda backfired, and he backed down. And his first email said to me, "TSSAA does not have a policy or stance against guns in parks. It is not our business what cities decide to do." I said, "Well, okay." That clarifies it on a political grounds, but I went back to him and I said, "Why do you forbid weapons, handguns, in your championship events?" He responded by saying, "We are an organization of schools, and our events are for schoolchildren. We simply believe that other than paid security officers hired by us, we cannot have weapons of any kind at those events around the student athletes participating. It's our responsibility to keep them safe." Now, to me, this is a common sense issue. Guns in hands of other than officers do not mix with parks for recreation, playgrounds, and ballfields. And my final comment is, why have our legislators failed so miserably to understand this?
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. My name is Pastor Eddie Vila, and I'm a resident of Cookeville, Tennessee, and I'm a carry permit holder. And what I like to say is that it just seems to me that you all are of the opinion that if you allow guns in the parks, that all of a sudden, every carry permit holder's gonna show up in a park. You know, I've been to the park, to the city park one time in the last two years. You know, I don't go to the parks a lot, but I like to be able to have the right to defend myself if it comes to it. Especially, you know, I'm a minister of the gospel. The last thing I wanna do, have to do, is to shoot anybody. But if my life is in danger, or the life of my family, or somebody else, I wanna have the right to protect them and to protect myself. It just seems to me, Your Honor, that we're losing more and more of our rights in this country. You know, the Second Amendment says that "Our rights to carry arms shall not be infringed upon," and that's just what's happening. We're losing more and more of our rights every day, and this just breaks my heart, you know? And I feel that people who go through, who have carry permits go... I went through an eight-hour class on gun safety, and where I'm allowed to carry guns and where I'm not allowed to carry them. I took a four-hour shooting, a target shooting. I shot 100 rounds, and I qualified. I don't have a criminal record. I've never hurt anybody in my life. But I feel that I need to have the right, that if I choose one day to go to a park because the criminals, they're not gonna obey the law. Somebody who's high on methamphetamine or drunk on alcohol, and he has a gun, he's not gonna care what he does. He's not gonna be of sound mind. But if there was somebody there with a gun permit and something terribly wrong happens, then, you know, at least there's the chance that lives can be saved. You know, all these shootings that we see that have gone on in different parts of the country, like just recently, somebody went into a gym and shot somebody, I guarantee you, these people were not carry permit holders. These were criminals.
No, actually, he wasn't a legal permit carrier.
You know, and so, that's my opinion, and I would just really appreciate if you would just consider that.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Barbara Baird. I'm here from Cookeville, and I am a carry permit owner, and I am one of five children who was always raised with safety first, with guns. And I almost can hear me with what he said. When you ban this, you're not banning guns from parks. You're banning safety from parks. The people that are gonna do the damage and do the crimes are not responsible, law-abiding gun owners. It seems to me you would want that extra arm of safety out there, when the people that carry concealed weapons go through training, and they're just taught about safety. People don't just pull their guns and use them. They use them when they're needed in a safety situation. And so, when you think of banning them, you're not banning guns in parks. You're banning safety in parks, because your drug dealers, your meth dealers, your people that are gonna rob my pocketbook, they don't care about your law. They're not gonna follow it. So who are you banning the guns from? Not the criminals. You're banning them from the people who can be another arm of safety in our community.
Mayor and county councilmen, first of all, I think the greatest city in the state of Tennessee and the country...
Bill, let me interrupt you. You and I are good friends, and I know your name, but if you could, for record, if you could just state my...
Bill Daley. For the fix and sake. To live here is my choice. First of all, my name's Bill Daley, and I live on Dawson Branch Road, 2427. I have a carry permit. I've had it since 1994. I've never had to pull it. I've never had to show it to no one. I didn't get a permit to harm any innocent person. I got a permit to harm someone that wants to harm me and my family. That's why I carry one. I have no intentions of shooting no one unless it's a threat to my life or to my family's life. Guns in parks, like the gentleman said and the lady too, the crooks are gonna take them in there, and there's no way to stop them. You know, and to give you a little idea, I'm a history buff, about World War II. Adolf Hitler, when he took power, the first thing he'd done was took guns away from the people in Germany. And if they didn't like what he said, he shot them. That simple. Is this a step next? Is it gonna be the city, you're not allowed to have a gun in the city nowhere? Or is the next step gonna be, you're gonna take my gun completely, but the Second Amendment gives me the right to own that gun? I've owned a gun since I was three years old. My daddy taught me totally safety, taught me how to shoot it. Never, ever, ever point it at a human unless there is no other option. It's your life or theirs. And you know, like I said, this is a beautiful city. I wanna protect this city. I don't want them to say, "Hey, come to Cookeville for the state parks, for the city parks. Come up here, and you can rape women, rob, do whatever you wanna do," because the people who got a gun permit can't carry a gun in there. But you can, because, like I said before, I... But it just amazes me that the state of Tennessee, people we elected, determined to do this, and now, from what I'm hearing, you wanna overturn it. And, you know, and everyone of you, I know most of you on the board, and you're fantastic people, but please give us the right, since we went through everything we went through with, to get this carry permit. Please give us the right to carry it in the parks. Thank you.
I'm Sam Renfro from Baxter, Tennessee. Excuse me, just a second before you get started. If we could just, you know, hold back on the applause so that we can speed through the comments, it just sort of eats into it, and I really, I think it's nice that you can confirm your support of the speakers, but if we could, just let's be businesslike and let's get down to the business here. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
I'm Sam Renfro from Baxter, Tennessee. I've made this area my home for the last 15 years. I've been an instructor both in handgun safety and in the permits for several years now, for close to 40 years. Somebody mentioned earlier that this is not gonna outlaw guns in the parks. It's not. Criminals don't obey the law. They never have. That's why the handgun permit bill was passed. Police officers are only there after the fact. It's very few times in crimes of violence that there's a policeman there on hand. If he was, it probably wouldn't happen. Now, you talk about the venue. There's police officers here. Anybody brought in a gun, they'd be in trouble because there's a police officer here. There's a police officer at your courts, in your buildings, but there's not a police officer. And, excuse me, there's police officers at your tournaments. They're there to protect the people and to serve. But there are venues that there are no police officers, unless you're willing to post somebody at, say, Kankakee, 24/7. If you can't do that, then you can't take the rights of the people that have taken the time out to get these permits. You can't take that right away from them to protect themselves. If you do, you've done the wrong thing. And there's 350,000 permit owners in this state. You figure their families, you're affecting a million point five people, maybe two million. You add in their friends. This is Tennessee. This isn't Illinois. It's not New York. Anti-gun people are the minority, a very, very, very small minority. You don't let the minority of those people run things? You're gonna tell them, let them tell you what to do because they're anti-gun? If you do that, then you risk more than this, what could happen. You wouldn't want Cookeville to become known as an anti-gun town, would you? Would you want gun owners, not just concealed carry gun owners, would you want gun owners all over this part of the country to say, "You know, I don't need to spend any money in Cookeville. If I can't go there and protect myself, I don't need to go there. I don't go to Illinois. I don't go to New York. Don't need to, don't want to. If I can't protect myself, my family, and my loved ones, I stay away. You pass this for this park, it will make me no difference. I'll just never go there." But on the day somebody does something to somebody there, when a legal gun owner, somebody that took the time to take the course, could've stopped them, you'll know how very, very wrong you were.
Thank you, Mr. Winfer. I appreciate your comments.
My name is Jimmy Carter, and I am a licensed carry permit holder. I carry a gun with me almost every day. When we leave the house, my wife says, "Do you have your glasses, your wallet?" And our gun is included in it. She feels safe. My family feels safer with me having one than not having one. I notice that you wanna feel safe in your environment here. You had two rather large police officers out front with a wand checking my suspender straps out when they went off. You didn't wanna have a gun in here on you. Well, I don't wanna have a gun on my family when I'm at Kankakee Park. We go fishing up there. We go picnicking up there. And I would like to have the right, the privilege, of protecting my family, as our state legislation has gave me this. You're, as I can tell by the way a couple of you talk, I think your minds is already made up. We need to give us more freedoms instead of taking them away. We got a freedom the other day, and you all, I think, have got your minds made up to deny us that freedom. And I just wish that you would consider it. I haven't shot anybody. Don't plan on it. I just wanna feel safe in America. I don't feel safe in America anymore. Police officers cannot be everywhere all the time, just like the other gentleman said. They come after the fact. I had a break-in, went to the sheriff's department. They said, "It's like trying to hold a Niagara Falls back with a teacup. Things is getting bad in America, y'all. The drugs. I just wanna feel safe again." And I do it by caring. Please reconsider your thoughts on this. We're not bad people. We're law-abiding people. We don't go to parks and run...
Mr. Mayor, my name's Jeffrey Judd, and I'd like to thank you and the rest of the council for holding this over a little longer, for everybody to have an option to let the wheels of democracy, to continue to turn in the right direction. First off, I'd like to say, anybody that's got the hinkling that passing or not passing this is gonna change anything about guns in parks, they're extremely naive. People are gonna carry guns when they wanna carry guns, and especially the criminals, there's no doubt about that. I believe opting out of this is an easy way out for the city. People have a right, a constitutional right, to protect themselves. Our state constitution had a little more added into it than probably should be, given the legislature an option to do what they've done, and now they've passed it on to you guys, and gals, sorry. And I hope that you realize what you're holding in your hands. It didn't belong to the state, and it doesn't belong to you, it belongs to the people sitting here, and you individually. The Second Amendment is not something to be lightly played with, and I think that's what's happened here. The state didn't make the decision, they left it to you guys, and I don't think that was right. With all that said, I watched something today that was really concerning. You gave people the option to call in their thoughts. I had a discussion with five or six citizens, and they was polarized. That's fine, everybody's got their opinion. But once I told them, you know, they're holding it, you can call in, line formed, they started calling in. After they called, I started talking to them a little more. Four of those, five people, were convicted felons that called in to give their opinion to you. One was a drug dealer. Done his time, fine, but he can't hold a gun, he can't vote. And the fifth person, to my dismay, wasn't even a United States citizen, he was here on a work visa. So there's five people that called in to give their opinion to you guys that don't even live in the city, much less, one of them isn't even a citizen. So you got a decision to make, and from what I see here, a lot of these people are for letting this go on through, not opting out. So my suggestion, Mr. Mayor and rest of the city council members, please listen to your citizens. You don't know who you were listening to on the phone today. Those could've been people from another state. Thank you for your time and holding this over, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Judd.
My name is Jim Seifert. I live in Cumberland Cove in Monterey. And if I had the time tonight, approximately ten to fifteen minutes, I think I could change your minds, but I obviously don't have that time. So I simply wanna end what I was going to say. And there were a group of gentlemen not so long ago that had to make a decision, just like the decision that you have to make. And I would bet anything I had that some of the comments that came out of their lips were the comments that you made here just a few minutes ago. And that decision turned out to be the most horrible, most terrible decision they ever made in their lives. That decision was made by legislators of the state of Virginia, and they said that nobody has the right to carry a gun at the university or at Virginia Tech. And they made that decision, they were the primary cause of that decision. And what happened because of that decision, that there was a tool, and that tool was a young man, who probably was a psycho, but he was a psycho that could understand logic and understand what the law was. He knew he was a terrible man. He knew he was a criminal. As a matter of fact, he knew that the only people that could stop him from slaughtering those children were people outside the building. And what did he do? He locked the doors. He made sure that nobody could come in there and stop him for what he was about to do. I have a dictionary right over there. The dictionary gives you the definition of a criminal. He is one who breaks the law. And you're sitting up there tonight and telling us that you're gonna pass a law that guarantees that if we're honest, law-abiding citizens, that when we go to your parks, the only people that we can be assured that are armed are criminals. By the definition of that dictionary. And that's what the legislators did at Virginia Tech. That's what the legislature now says in Tennessee. No matter how conservative we become, we are saying that the only people, other than police, that can go into our schools and our parks are criminals, by the very definition of the English language. And what are those criminals gonna do to us? Because you're gonna make us defenseless. The Fifth Amendment of the Bill of Rights says that I have the right to my life, which I define as my physiological and psychological well-being, to my liberty, which I define as my individualistic spiritual aspirations, be it a religious spirit or a soul, or the indomitable human spirit, a secular definition, and I have the right to my property. And you are saying, by avoiding getting around, doing away with, the Second Amendment of my Bill of Rights, that I do not have the right to my property, to my liberty, my individualistic spiritual aspirations, or my life, my physiological and psychological well-being. Other people made your choices that you have to make tonight, and they were terribly wrong. Don't make the same choice, please.
Thank you, Mr. Sevier.
My name is Jonathan Williams. I live in the Double Springs area of Putnam County, but I own and operate Veterans Barber Shop here in Cookeville, so I pay city taxes and use city parks. I'll try not to beat anybody up tonight, I know you're probably gonna be tired of hearing all of us by the end of the evening. But I don't know the exact wording of the oath you took when you were sworn into your office, but I'm sure it had something to do with upholding and defending the Constitution of the state of Tennessee and city charter and the United States Constitution. I think it is your duty as a public servant to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States instead of uphold and defend the status quo. Yes, there's been a, there's already a ban on firearms in our city parks, and I understand that, but I would strongly suggest that such a ban, if it were brought to constitutional challenge, would not stand. It just hasn't been challenged yet. Because we are guaranteed the right to keep and bear arms in our Constitution, if you are going to deny anyone that right, or you're gonna restrict or infringe upon that right, I think it is your duty to provide what would be the equivalent of a political probable cause. You need to show with evidence why carrying in a certain area poses any greater danger than carrying in any other area. And if you can't do that, you should fall back on the United States Constitution and protect our rights. It is your job to make the case why it should be banned, rather than our job to make the case why we should be allowed to carry. Finally, this is a language every politician understands. Some of you have higher political ambitions. This is your one opportunity, as a city councilman, to weigh in on a state and national debate. Think long and hard about your vote tonight. It will follow you. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David Denmark. I live in Shipley Road here in Cookeville. I have a business and I pay city taxes as well. I'm also a card-carrying permit holder, who has also been through tactical training courses that were provided by some of the city officers back some time ago when they were available. Biggest problem that I'm seeing is the state has given us the opportunity to protect ourselves, because when we started with the permits, crime rates dropped dramatically all over the country. Every state that was involved, every city involved, crime rate decreased. Didn't do that because we told them, you can go to the park without your gun, it's because you could go to the places with your gun that crime fell. We're facing the same here. As this city grows, it's not your neighbor that it used to be. The people that are moving in here are not all nice people. The people from Nashville and other cities that are coming here to prey on our community don't care if you can have a gun in a park or not. That's where we need to be able to protect ourselves in those cases. I have two young sons. I cannot let them go around the park at Can Creek Park, because there is a crime rate in the park. I don't know what it is, but I know that it happens, because it's been in the papers. I can't let my kids walk the trail at the park by themselves, and that's for a reason. Now, that doesn't mean that I've got a higher protection for them to go around the park unless I do it myself. And if I do it myself, I'm getting older and fatter, and I can't fight as good anymore. So I need protection. And I don't think our chief's gonna walk the trail with me next time I wanna go, with my kids, or the officer that's on duty, if there is even one there. That's another reason. So I think you should consider the rights of the people the state's giving us to reduce crime in every community in the state and across the nation. And I hope you consider the fact that it could be your grandchildren walking that trail, because I'm sure you frequent the parks as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir, go ahead.
My name is Stephen Bynum. I live here in Cookeville, Tennessee. I'm the father of seven children, three of which are with me. I'm a permit holder, and I have lots of friends who are permit holders. I've never met a handgun carry permit holder that I would have a concern of them carrying around my children, and I carry around my children frequently. I do have a concern that there's predators at the park who would feel safer in attacking my child while he's alone, because he doesn't have to worry about the consequences of an armed parent stumbling upon him. I do not think that there's gonna be permit holders, everybody's gonna be running to the park to carry their guns. But I do think criminals will consider that there may be one person who's gonna step upon them in a criminal act, and they're gonna take action. That's what I wanna see happen, and that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is George Bristol. I've been a resident of Cookeville since 2003, after my retirement from the federal government. During my forty years of service to this country, twenty years in the United States Air Force, twenty years with the United States Department of State, I have taken six oaths, either of enlistment or of employment. A key part of that oath has been to protect and defend the Constitution of our country, and by extension, our Bill of Rights, and that's why I'm here today. I'm neither pro-gun or anti-gun, I'm not a political person, but I do believe in our country and our Constitution. Now, at this point in time, I will most likely, in the very near future, be applying for a carry permit because of my physical disabilities. I've not, I've reached the point now where I cannot take flight, nor can I fight. I have no other means. I'll be undergoing surgery shortly, and part of that rehabilitation would include long walks, in the parks, in the hiking trails, or whatever. During that time, I have no way to protect myself either from, like the lady said before, some meth dealer, or a crackhead, or whatever, walking out in there with intent to do harm to me, or even from a rabid animal. I can't run away from them, what choice do I have? If you ban the guns in the city parks, you're banning the right for people to protect themselves, a right that was recently affirmed by the Supreme Court by a majority decision. That's the reason I'm here today, and I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is JW Williams, and I've lived in Cookeville since 2004. Is this America? Is this Tennessee? I come here this evening in what may be a futile attempt, but recent events in my life have shown me that life is short and unpredictable. I have learned that aptity leads to regret, and my remarks to that are meant to reduce both. I ask each of you to use your mind and its logic, and apply them to science, human history, and even political theory. My remarks are also, I also ask you, with my remarks, to use your heart and its tool of compassion, and your gut and its tool of instinct. These implements should then be applied to a simple question. What does it mean when small groups of individuals regulate and restrict the liberty, freedoms, and interactions of others? Is this a democratic representation? Is this liberty? In recent months, the good people of Tennessee called, emailed, faxed, polled, petitioned their state legislators. I know, I was one of them, and I helped lead others. For the God-given right to better protect their lives and the lives of their loved ones. We obviously had the ear of our legislators, it was a sweet and long-needed victory for the people. But this victory may be cut short by a small cartel of political power. Victory can now be never realized because the beliefs, ideologies, philosophies, and different actual life experiences, not facts of this small group. Is this America? Is this Tennessee? I beg you to open your mind to the facts and real truth. The right to bear arms means the right to carry a weapon. Nowhere did it say the right to be restricted or regulated to force the law-abiding and responsible citizen to leave it in his carriage, or today, his car. This is because our founders knew all too well from the history, that tyrants, criminals, and other nefarious oppressors of the people would always ignore the law in order to pillage the citizenry. Study after study shows that responsible, well-armed citizens reduce crime. While our police officers do their dangerous jobs well, and don't receive enough credit nor pay for their honorable service, it is just a known fact that our brave men and women in blue cannot be everywhere, all the time. There's this thing called response time. And here I'm gonna venture down a trail that might be, seems somewhat dark to some of you, but please bear with me. If this response time was even one to two minutes, which it is not, some whack-job crazy criminal gang mastermind, or even a terrorist, could walk through these very doors and kill us all in a matter of minutes, where there's a will, there's a way, even though there are police officers here. But would we not be better off with five, ten, twenty more well-armed, responsible citizens? I would say the facts show that that would be the case. As terrible as these things are, and our desire to...
Thank you for your comments. I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to cut you short there, we're gonna run over the three minutes there, but we appreciate your comments, and thank you.
I mean, I can be, I mean, I took the time to write it down, it wouldn't take me just a few more minutes.
Well, we're limiting it to three minutes per...
Can we put it to a vote real quick? Can I just finish? I took like two hours to write it.
This is not a voting issue. Our rules of the House are three minutes.
Yeah, we don't vote in America, do we?
Thank you.
Thank you, council members. My name is Jason Woodring. I live up in Monroe, Tennessee, but I come down here quite often, frequently, to either take care of my niece and do my businesses around Cookeville, because as of right now, Monroe doesn't even have a Dollar General. But I am a non-weapons carry permit holder. But I do, from seeing everybody around here in this room who are, I feel much safer as it is. What I feel that you're doing right now is pretty much taking away your trust from the common citizen, to protect the common citizen. As me, who doesn't really carry a weapon because of legal issues, because I don't have a CCW permit, I'm either relying on line 111 to get here hopefully faster than five minutes, or for me to at least try to, you know, beat whoever up trying to either hurt my niece, hurt me, or do whatever. Let me ask you all this, keep it through your minds, is how long do you think you can outlast somebody about my size? And not even, probably even on drugs, just my size in a knockout, drag-out fight? I can tell you for right now, through my experience, because I was a police officer in Daytona Beach, Police Department down in Florida, and through the academy training that I had to go through, I'm only good for about a minute and a half. Then I'm winded, my judgment starts slipping, and then I'm trying, hopefully, that the next two and a half, three minutes for my backup to arrive is going to help me. And, you know, that's a major trust, but I was also hoping that somebody might pass, you know, passerby or might do something, you know, and having a gun is a great perk. You know, you don't even have to even just, you know, really shoot anybody, you just, you know, somebody brings it out, and they're on the other side, a lot of times, they're going to stop. Because they realize that that $20 that they're trying to get off of somebody isn't really worth their life anymore, and they'll either stop or they'll run away, which is all you need to do. It's all you need them to do. And again, what you're trying to do here is, the state, the state has already said that it's okay... off of somebody isn't really worth their life anymore, and they'll either stop or they'll run away, which is all you need to do. It's all you need them to do. And again, what you're trying to do here is, the state, the state has already said that it's okay for us to start carrying in parks, which means the state has said that the common citizen can protect themselves and that they can trust the common citizen. Apparently, they know what the response time is for even the highway patrol to show up for an accident. But what you're about to do here is that you're about to disregard the common citizen and their trust to protect themselves, and also to possibly protect others. I'd rather have somebody armed in there just that one chance. That one chance that somebody might be armed, and it might be, you know, just my day that somebody's going to either attack me or attack me with my niece for whatever reason, and there's somebody in that park that actually has either a weapon, a good knife, whatever, but they got that permit to hold it because they had to go through the training, they had to go through the certification, and they just go over there and, you know, brandish the weapon, guy runs away, we have a better day, we call law enforcement if somebody already hasn't, and we just, you know, do the description, hopefully you can find the guy.
Thank you, sir. I missed your name at the beginning, I'm sorry.
Uh, Jason Woodring.
Jason Woodring. Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
All right, yes, sir.
My name's Fred Perry. I live at 2222 Huntland Road. I'm a Vietnam vet. I carry two handgun permits. I carry one in Tennessee, and I carry one for the state of Florida. Now, in the state of Florida, we had problems down there with cars being hijacked by different gangs. We had a young couple that had two young kids. They made a wrong turn one afternoon down there, all four of them got killed by this gang. And you people that are sitting up there, all eight of you are trying to take our constitutional rights away. I thought I walked into Washington, D.C. when I walked in here. And I feel that we should be able to defend my grandchildren when they're in the parks here in town, and not have gangs killing our kids. And it will happen. You guys got your blinders on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
My name is Mike Blackwood. I'm a resident here of Cookeville. I live on Springdale Drive. I heard somebody speaking earlier about parks, all different sizes, small, large. We all know Walmart, that's pretty public, but yet some guy can go up there and grab a hold of a child and put a knife to her throat. Can happen at our parks. Can happen anywhere where we are. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mike. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Tracy Sparkman. We moved to Cookeville, Tennessee, the summer of '07. We moved from a place where 11 years ago, three officers responded to an incident where a distraught teenager went after his former girlfriend with a gun. Three officers responded before the neighbor was able to take care of the situation, the neighbor who had a gun. Two of those officers, I attended their funeral. You are operating under a false sense of security. Our officers are wonderful, but even when they are there, sometimes they are not enough. Please allow me to protect my children, allow my husband to protect his family. We will not harm anyone else, but we do not wish to be harmed. Even our officers on sight cannot prevent everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Jim Addicks, and I don't live in Cookeville, but I own property in Cookeville. And you asked to keep it short by not repeating, and I'm going to try really hard to do that, but one thing that has not been mentioned, you're talking about not changing the status quo. Well, on September 10, 2001, we didn't seem to have a problem with box cutters on airliners. Times are changing, and we can either change with the times or pay the penalty. And the penalty is innocent people being killed, raped, robbed, all these things, that statistics prove a lot of this can be reduced or avoided by law-abiding, legally armed citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Greetings. Peace be with you. My name is Jose Martinez. I reside in White Plains, and I'm a retired police officer from Miami-Dade County. Did 25 years of law enforcement there. I'm a survivor, and I'm here today to let you know that. I dealt with many problems in my life. Also, I'm a Vietnam veteran and the U.S. Marine Corps. I survived that too. And also, I'm a U.S. Army veteran. I survived that too. And I have the Lord with me, Christ, so He watches over me. And I'm assuming that He's watching over you too, if you're a true believer. But I will let you know that evil is everywhere. It's in Cookeville, Tennessee, and I've seen some of it. And I always carry a firearm with me. I have a gun permit from the state of Tennessee, and as a retired police officer, I'm also allowed to carry one. I will always carry my firearm with me, and I will protect myself. I'm a survivor, and no matter where I'm at, I will survive. Parks, or no parks, ordinance, or no ordinance, I will survive. I guarantee you that. I don't depend on 911. I don't know how many police officers you have in your city here, but I know how the response time is, because I dealt with 911 all the time, and I was there most of the time after the fact, when many people hurt, killed, injured, raped, predators everywhere in parks. I dealt with many situations in parks. So beware of that, and also, you could be a victim yourselves, and you're going to depend on some of your police officers here. But if I'm armed, I'm around you, I will defend you, because I know how far I can go protecting others. I neutralize the threat, and I know how far I can use, I'm a responsible person, so just put your notice. By the way, I believe this building is no weapons allowed, correct? I've been here many times with my firearm. I'm a police officer, and I have a gun permit. I don't have to advertise any of you if I have one or not, but I've been here many times. I can go anywhere here with my firearm, and you will know it. So I'm a good person, a good citizen, a Christian. The bad guys don't care about that. So on that note, ordinance or no ordinance, I will carry. I've been to law sometimes. I'm a survivor. I don't agree with all the laws anyhow, so on that note, peace be with you and God bless you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Paul Mylum. I live in Double Springs.
Hang on just a second, Paul. All right, go ahead, Paul. Thank you.
Yes. We've heard a lot here tonight, and we really hope that several of you are reconsidering your vote. Here recently, as of last night, I was informed by a friend of mine, someone had broken into a vehicle and stole some things out of there. She didn't know it until the fraud people called her to ask her why was she spending so much so quick in Nashville? She said, "I'm not." Crime is coming into our community. I was pulled here about 11 years ago, and this is a great town, a great community. I love it. I have two children. I take three others with me several times, so a lot of times, I have five children with me. I have a permit to carry. I got it through the City of Cookeville's Police Department. I went through their range with Officer Cersei giving me my, taking my test with me. So as you can see, not all of us are going to just any range or anybody to get our permit. It was your own police department that allowed me to get mine. I had a friend of mine I thought a lot of get killed in a place because a criminal had a gun. Yeah, it was a place that, um, he shouldn't have been probably, but yet he did. And I wonder, when we talk about the parks, how long will it take an officer to respond and get back on that back corner of the dam at the park when we go to Kane Creek? When you've got citizens that have permits to carry, there are several of us here, several of us use the parks. One of us may be walking by a crime that can help prevent a young lady from being raped, a young child from being raped or killed. But you can't tell me within the time that someone may be a couple of hundred yards from this, that someone can make a phone call to 911, get a police officer out there, and watch him run from that parking lot all the way to that backside of that dam where it's kind of secluded, nobody can get to, in time to save that woman or child, when someone with a gun possibly can? Just because we carry a gun doesn't mean we're going to pull it and shoot it. So many instances have been prevented just by showing it. Criminals go where they're not going to be confronted. If you confront them, they're going to run. They're nothing but cowards. Or they wouldn't be a criminal, they'd be an upstanding citizen to do what's right for their family and their community. And I believe that's what everybody here is trying to prove to you. We don't, we would appreciate it if you think twice on your vote and let us, allow us the opportunity, if it ever arises, it's like life insurance. We don't want to use it, but if we ever have to, we feel safe that we have it, such as life insurance. If our family needs it, we have it.
Thank you, sir.
We hope they never need it.
We appreciate it. Thank you very much for your comments, Paul.
Thank you, I appreciate your time.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, council members, and fellow citizens. I'm Gerald McFarland, 231 Farley Avenue here in Cookeville, 38501. I think we're all here looking for safety in the parks. I think that's all one common goal. Our disagreement is on how to get that. But opting out will not stop undesirables from going into parks and mugging or raping or murdering people. It goes on. People with permits have gone to state-mandated schools and spent time in safety classes, learning legal responsibility, and proving their abilities on the range. There seems to be a lot of unfounded fear surrounding guns in the hands of law-abiding citizens. In fact, the statistics prove that guns in the hands of citizens is a sure way to reduce crime. I don't know if you've noticed, but to me, the majority of massacres in this country have happened in places where we don't allow guns. We don't allow guns in schools, but 44 times in the last 13 years, there's been a massacre in a school in this nation of the United States. Forty-four times. That's 3.1 times a year. In the same time, or almost the same time, a little town called Kennesaw, Georgia, adopted a law requiring every homeowner, head of household, to keep a firearm and maintain the firearm in their town, or in their hands. Their crime rate instantly dropped and has remained low for the 13 years. Their crime rate is less than 20% of the national average now. That, I think, is the difference. Anyway, I hope that you will consider the people's rights to safety. And one other thing I would like to say is that as a state-certified handgun instructor, I have had the opportunity to school and teach several women with tears in their eyes because they really didn't want to have to carry a gun. But they were there getting the permit to save themselves from people that were stalking them. Some of those stalkers have later died because of their stalking. These women didn't want to be there, but they did it because they knew if they wanted to stay alive, they had to. I would hate to be the person responsible to tell them that they cannot take care of their safety when they go to one of our parks.
Thank you, Mr. McFarland. Appreciate your comments. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Kristy Fagers. I'm the mother of five children, and I'm asking you, please, do not ban the guns in the parks. I have had a child die, and if I take my children to the park, I want to know that I'm safe with my kids, and I'm not going to have one of them killed by someone that's hyped out on drugs, or someone that's just looking to kill. You're going to make our parks unsafe for the children when you ban the guns. Those of us that abide, I'm a, I have a carry permit, and I abide by my permit. Those of us that abide, we are going to be the ones affected greatly, because those that don't care, they're still going to carry in that park, they're still going to do their drug deals, they're still, they're going to harm people. It's going to increase. But our children's safety is what should matter most. That's what we should care about. We are exposing them to danger by saying, "You cannot carry your gun in the park." I will not want to take my kids to a park if the guns are banned. There is many mothers that feel that way, because if something happened to me, I would want to know, hopefully, there is someone there that has a gun-carry permit that could help my child if someone were to knock me over the head. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Kristy. Excuse me. Any further comments?
I'm Sarah McDonald. I live on Free Street in Cookeville. I'm a little nervous, and I did not expect to speak tonight. I was sitting at home, so you'll have to excuse me. I'm not a public speaker. I'm a mother, and I'm, in all respect, I have differing views than the majority who've spoken here tonight, but you need to know that my family, I come from a family of farmers and hunters, but they all have licenses, and they all hunt on areas where they should. And they would not take their guns to parks, because in my opinion, there's only one thing that you would hunt in a park. And as a mother who has raised her children to enjoy the Putnam County in-city parks, I cannot imagine passing this. I just cannot imagine it. I plan to go to Dogwood Park tomorrow night with my children, and it just makes me nervous. And I was just, I've talked to, I've talked to other mothers today. I even talked to probably the most conservative man I know who's a father, and he said he would, he's against this. And I'm only speaking tonight because I feel like I may be the only one who is speaking this way, but most of the people that I've talked to feel the way I feel, so that's what may be come out tonight, because most of the women I know are home with their families right now. And we just visualized, if I had a gun in my purse, I would be pushing my daughter on the swing, but I wouldn't have it with me. It would be in my purse somewhere else. Or if I were at a ballgame, my son's ballgame, and tensions got out of hand, what in the world would happen? I mean, have you been to those ballgames and seen angers get out of control? It just makes me nervous. And I would just like to speak my opinion on this matter, that I'm not alone, even though you're just hearing my voice, please know that I'm not alone in this opinion, and that there are several who are home tonight that cannot be here, that feel the way I feel. And I appreciate your listening to me tonight.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Marion Shires. I live on 1136 Johnny Budd Lane in Cookeville, and I would like to say that after tonight, I'm going to get a permit. Okay, my husband has been trying to talk me into this for a long time, but you know what? I've realized that if I am out there, and I am by myself, and she says, "Do you have it in your purse?" Well, you can have it on your person too, but again, the gun is used as a deterrent. It is not intended to hunt anybody. I'm not going to the park to hunt anybody. I don't even like hunting. I don't like shooting. I get upset when I run over a rabbit, okay? So I'm not going to go out there hunting. But I want to be able to defend myself if somebody's out there after me, because you know what? That police officer out there, I can't carry him in the park. Did you know that? But I can carry a gun. He is way too big for me to carry him to the park. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Art Culver from Monterey. Of course, I'm looking to move down to Cookeville, which this is the city I love, and I appreciate the mayor and the council, and some of y'all have done great things for me, Mr. Mills. And I appreciate this city and appreciate all y'all. I suppose I stand in the center, really, I've never carried a weapon in a park, but I've been real concerned. I know I had a grandfather that was killed by two thugs, and I have another relative that when dignitaries from other nations come to New York City, that this person protects them with guns. And I asked, you know, what countries? Well, from Iran, and from Russia, and Putin, and whenever they come to New York, she's there to protect, armed to their guild, you might say. I think about what we can't, we can't protect ourselves maybe in some places, but we can protect the dignitaries from other nations. And I think about Virginia Tech, think about the little school in Lancaster, Pennsylvania, where six Amish children were gunned down right in the school. I thought, well, if there was just protection there, it would never happen. And I thought, you know, if I was, I was at Kane Creek Park the other day with my ch- And I thought, you know, if I was, I was at Kane Creek Park the other day with my children, fishing, enjoying and thankful that we have a wonderful park that we have. And I was, I was thinking as we went up the hill and we were sitting near the shelter, I thought, well, maybe if one of y'all, Ms. Anderson, Ms. McLean, Mr. Shipley, if y'all had a family reunion there, and there's no guns allowed, but somebody started mowing down your family, and if I was sitting on a bench with a, a gun, I would save your family. I would do all I can to help you. Now, what kind of person would I be if I had a gun and I just sat there and just watched it all happen? You probably wouldn't think too highly of me if you found out that later I could have saved some people there. But anyway, maybe I'm not making no sense, but I just wanted to say something, because I don't carry the weapon. But I've been concerned when I see all the things happen, and crazy people, there's no telling if somebody's gonna walk into a church and just kill 50 people or two or three guys with guns. I'm concerned about this. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Yes, sir.
I'm Breland Sparkman, live on Pin Oak, here in Cookeville, wondrous little town, best I've lived in, and in the short time that we've been here, I've noticed that things are getting a little worse, but that's not my main concern. My wife spoke of a horrible incident when we were on the coast of Mississippi. There was another, there was a man unarmed witnessing another man eat an infant to death on the side of the road. All he could do was call 911. I'm sure that man has nightmares that he couldn't stop the murder of an innocent child. That's a nightmare I don't want. I don't want the nightmare of protecting the child. If my wife, daughters were under some duress, and I had to lethally protect them, I would have nightmares, but I'd much rather have those nightmares than have the nightmares that I didn't do anything or couldn't do anything. We've had, I believe you said, since '94, that, uh, the gun-free zone of parks, you know, the gospels tell us that the disciples were sent out unarmed for their first mission. Their second mission, they were told to sell their cloaks, their very protection, if they didn't own a sword. We've served our time in controlling our tenders and being honorable citizens. I pray regularly that I'll carry a gun for all of my life and never need it, as opposed to not have it and need it once. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name's Carl Shires, you heard my wife speak a minute ago, and I have just a very brief statement. I have permits that allow me to carry in every state in the nation. I've carried guns for 40-some years, I've used them, I know what the consequences are. They've been used against me, I know what the consequences are of not having one. It hurts. It hurts for a long time. But all the people here have said everything that I wanted to say, and I just have one question for you. You may not know, the Supreme Court has ruled that the police have no duty to protect you. If a policeman fails to respond, whether it's his fault or not, you can't bring suit. Okay? So what I want to know, city council, if you pass this ban and someone is injured in a city park, are you going to claim immunity? Or are you going to admit liability and take responsibility for those damages? That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you for your comments. Yes, sir.
My name is Jeff Jones, I've lived here in Cookeville for about four years, and I appreciate this opportunity. You guys are doing exactly what democracy is supposed to do, you listen to the people and hear their opinions. I hope you haven't formed your own beforehand 100%. It seems that the majority here might disagree with you, I'm assuming a lot of them are voters. And, you know, my point is, is this, like the gentleman said before, as far as the liability, I'm not real clear on why you're reasoning, I haven't heard a reason yet on why to ban it. You know, I heard the status quo thing, and I think about, well, you know, when your position was filled by the person before you, you were okay with upsetting the status quo and taking that position. If taxes are needed to be raised, you don't mind changing the status quo there, I think this is a good reason to change the status quo. Councilperson Anderson down there spoke on the fact that the stats show our parks are safe. Well, if that's the case, then we don't need the police in there. You know, it's not because they're in there, it's great that they are, our officers are fantastic, they would do things to defend us. But first and foremost, it's our responsibility to defend us in everything. One, not being stupid, don't go in areas we shouldn't be, you know, but beyond that, why not defend ourselves? I would defend you, I would defend my family, I would defend your children, and you're saying because I'm in the park, I shouldn't. So if I'm standing there, permitted to carry, carrying my weapon, you're being assaulted, your child's being assaulted, I should stand there and not do anything, because when I pull my weapon to defend your child, I become the criminal. The person that's in there that's the criminal, just like the vice mayor said, you can't control them, you've never expected to control those people. The law-abiding citizens, you're telling us that these are the only people you can control, so we're going to. You know, it's a shame that our state legislators have put you in this position. Upsets me that they are so weak that they have put you in this position, they should have made the decision and made it clear. They didn't make any decision, they just put it off on you guys. And I'm sorry that they did, because it puts you in this spot, but they have put you in this spot. It's time to stand up, it's time to put yourselves in the spotlight and say, "No more, we're not backing down to this anymore, we're going forward." My wife walks in the park, I walk in the park, my children walk in the park. My wife, in my opinion, is a very attractive woman. She walks out there on occasion, not often, by herself, during the day, obviously, a lot of times walks with other women. She has a permit to carry, she will carry, and she should have the right to defend herself, not because she shouldn't because we don't want to change the status quo. I, I hope that you guys are hearing all these people that are out here, and I know you came in here kind of with your minds made up, it's on your faces, this is what I do, is read people, not in agreement with the one person that was on your side, kind of, and the rest of us, eh, you know, and that's okay, I understand, that's what people do. Please think about it. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your comments. Yes, sir.
I'm Charles Mullin, I live in Cookeville. I won't take much time, but I, I think, what I'm saying might be more negative, but I, I think by voting to override the law and banning it, I think that's a slap in the face of, of the law-abiding people in the county that would be supporting you and...